Also from our trustee cap, we approve the minutes.
Also from our trustee cap, we approve the minutes. Do you have a second please?
Sir.
Second by trustee cap.
Trustee cap?
Yes.
Trustee bonner?
Yes.
Trustee garcia? Trustee greer?
Yes.
Trustee richardson?
Yes.
Trustee paper?
Yes.
Pass the minutes approved. Before we open the, uh, the end up the public, we have a statement and a comment. Give your name and make a comment please. Please keep your time in three minutes. I'll ask the motion to open the meeting to the public.
What motion, open the meeting to the public?
What from our trustee cap, do we have a second?
A seven.
Second by trustee bonner, do I take the call?
Trustee cap?
Yes.
Trustee bonner?
Yes.
Trustee garcia? Trustee greer?
Yes.
Trustee richardson?
Yes.
Trustee paper?
Yes.
The motion has been approved. Now open the comments. And a comment from the public. And a comment from the public.
Hi, I'm John Heiduk.
Hey.
I want to say that the last, last Tuesday when I was here, after I spoke, clerk Chavez interjected herself after my three-minute speaking. That's the only reason why I'm even bringing this up. I was gonna let it go, but I asked you trustees, what would you do or think if this happened to you, okay? I'll be brief with this. A while ago, I came into clerk's office not knowing anything, just learning about the village. And I asked the clerk specifically, as you got a three percent rate increase for the next twenty years. Why'd you guys do that? I'm just wondering where it came from. She told me that Chicago and Hammond have been raising their rates, and that's why we gotta raise our rates. Didn't know nothing, so I accepted that, I left. I filed a FOIA Freedom of Information request. Two weeks later, I get it. It says that not only does Chicago and Hammond not have a twenty-year schedule, they decided, they decided annually based on the cost of inflation. So, basically she made that up as far as I could tell, okay? Secondly, let's see. I was also thinking about, excuse me, a few weeks ago, she told me again that we weren't paying, the residents were not paying for the water meters. Well, it got me to thinking, I went back and researched, I saw the water ordinance. Every trustee in here approved the water rate ordinance except trustee bonner. She's the only one that said no, thank you trustee bonner. I looked at the thing and mayor polk signed it, you all signed off on it. Trust, or, uh, the clerk here, not only signed, he signed it twice. So what you were doing with me a couple of weeks ago, you weren't just arguing with me, I was actually quoting the ordinance. And you were arguing against the own ordinance that you signed.
I'm sorry, sir. John, do you have a question or comment?
This is my statement. The very last of my statement, I'm almost done here. You had told me that, well, you didn't tell me, I called you a jag. The reason why I called you a jag, which by the way, I looked it up, it's not considered profanity. But a jag by definition is inept, stupid, or contempt. And you were treating me like that. That's why I sent that to you, that's why I called you that. Having said all that, last meeting I was here too, mayor polk, I suggest that you, trustee greer and richardson, I've been waiting for over six months to have a return call from you guys. You guys didn't answer me that night, and I still haven't heard back from you guys as of tonight. I'm just wondering, that was kinda telling on that part. Having said all that now, I'm just wondering, out of all you guys up here, who do you guys report to? Who do you guys report to in here? Who do you answer to? Who pays you guys? Does anybody have an answer for that?
So is there a purpose of this line of questions?
That's all I'm asking, that was the only question I had out of all this. Who, the thing is, we pay you guys, and yet, you guys could have been treated like me. I'm just asking from here on in, I don't expect an explanation now, but can you start considering us a little bit better? Okay, thank you.
John?
Yes.
The last meeting, I don't know if you read, if you saw it on video, that I said that we have wonderful residents, I love our residents, it's even here in the minutes. Okay, so you'll see it online. Everyone should be treated with professionalism, okay? And that improves the employees. And when I saw that, uh, video, that you called her a jag, I was very disappointed, very disappointed, because that's not what we represent. And that's not what we want to have our employees represent. And so our public should not come talking to other people like that, that was very disappointing. And as far as the water meter, anything you do in life, there, the costs are gonna be projected someplace else. Nothing's for free. So if these water meters are reflected in the bill, then that's the same thing with NICOR and COVID and everything else. Are you happy with the current water rate, because we fought for that rate? Are you happy with it?
No.
I am. I was very pleased in my bill for the past couple of months. It was affordable.
I'm happy that a lot of people, I'm happy that the meters are replaced.
Yes.
Because people are now paying for what they're actually.
Exactly.
No, I understand that.
Exactly.
I never had a problem with replacing the meters. I have a problem with just, they, they printed out saying we're not paying for them. We know we are.
Of course.
Well, they said we aren't, then she's arguing with me. I don't come here to argue.
Thank you for your comment.
Three minutes left, does the board have another comment?
And, and I think that we're always gonna have disagreements, you know, you're probably not gonna agree with something that's done. There's a way to talk, you know, there's respect between each other, you know?
I tried that.
When I get upset with my boss, it's like, you know, let's agree to disagree on something. And just treat each other with respect and argue with respect. There's a way to do that, too. You know, and it's a closed side. You know, just, we should be doing it, and you guys should be doing it.
I won't until then.
Thank you for the comment, thank you. Elena, other comment?
Maria Muñoz Sullivan, one for one cajun. Uh, in the unfinished business, it says a hundred and thirty-four COVID-19 cases in Burnham. And then it says in parentheses, eighty-three not from residents. And I just wanna know, eighty-three not from residents means?
Elena, other comment? I'll ask some motion to approve the meeting to the public.
What motion to approve the meeting to the public?
Motion from our trustee richardson.
I second.
Second by trustee cap.
Trustee cap?
Yes.
Trustee bonner?
Yes.
Trustee garcia?
Yes.
Trustee greer?
Yes.
Trustee richardson?
Yes.
Trustee paper?
Yes.
My motion has, uh, we have a report, uh, I reported on the census the last time, it's up to fifty-eight percent. Over nineteen cases as of today, it's forty-seven. And I did report, uh, the last reading, that that was a discrepancy in the figures, which took a couple of months for that to be tracked down. So as of today, the village of Burnham, the residential community of Burnham, as far as seven cases, which is pretty consistent with a small town. The other figures were, uh, kind of overflated, and I really did not get into details, just, uh, and it's how it came about. But you know a lot of things come down together, you know, cover, like, privacy, you know? We will be doing some sidewalk repairs, we're gonna have to scale back our budget, that thirty thousand over budget right now, so we're not gonna take someone over our budget. We hope to have that underway in a couple of months. So if one of we don't get this time, we'll try to get it next time, so. Burnham just moving forward, I would like to announce that the, uh, the frontage is going private. It's underway. I'm sure many of you have seen it, it is impressive quite well. We can help the, uh, food market, vegetable market. So hopefully sometime early fall, hopefully, that that'll be underway. And we'll keep you posted and updated on that, so. I think that's all I have, so, this time, good news.
Thank you very much.
Please.
The only thing I have, um, the village hall is still close to the public. You can still make payments over the phone, and these are MasterCard, or by mail, or by the night job. Second, the vehicle stickers do expire not till the end of August. They'll be on sale first week of August. Oh yes, the vehicle stickers were reduced, um, last year they were forty-five, this year they're forty. We still have the seniors, um, at no charge, and the veterans at no charge for the first, um, sticker.
Then put information in the report. Public education, the government state, trustee greer?
Getting in everyone. Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve the color grid system for the village of Burnham. There are three pricing plans. Two thousand two hundred unlimited emergency use. Two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars unlimited emergency plus three thousand and twenty-eight dollars fully unlimited use. So, okay, so. Code Red can deliver messages at a, at a, uh, high, through high level technology. Code Red is designed to provide a one-stop pool of service. With a single implication, Code Red can be used to send alerts regarding emergency management. In case there was a chemical spill, uh, if there was a, uh, severe weather warning, we will be able to send it immediately out. As far as law enforcement, if there was missing and engaged children, or if there was an evacuation notice, and, um, people need to evacuate. Uh, if there was a neighborhood climate alert, then people need to go immediately, we can do it immediately. For instance, if the fire department, if they need to send an evacuation notice, different models, so if there was a gas leak, we'll be able to notify our residents immediately. As far as the health department, if there was a, uh, a flu epidemic, uh, virus outbreak in certain areas, we'll be able to notify the people in our community immediately. And as far as the public enforcement utility, if there was a street closure, or if boil water, uh, a liquid boiling water, we can notify our residents immediately. So this is a very important, um, that we need this system ASAP. So today, uh, we can get a three-year licensing for these fluids, twenty-four hours a day, every day of the year, that we would be, um, in this system, in this company, Code Red system. And another thing that's very nice about it too, it can reach our non-speaking citizens, so that our message will be translated to our non-English people. So this is very beneficial, this is a system that we do need in our, in our area, in our village.
Okay, and, uh, trustee, uh, in addition to that, for the next letter that we send out July, we're gonna be asking the community, how they're gonna be notified in the event, you know, the email, the text message, uh, phone call, you know, to the community or just coming out, you'll have to give us their preference.
Okay, I have a question.
Oh.
What? Go ahead.
Different licenses for the, uh, each, uh, emergency, whatever the emergency was, and there are different features for each. I think that is really, really bad, we're gonna recommend to, some of them, um, they don't do that. So, we don't think we need the maximum, except for the one, whatever that figure is, so we're gonna recommend that we take the some of them, twenty-five. If we need to add to it, it's time to.
Okay, so you can, um, throughout that three years, you can upgrade it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so basically we're paying for the licensing software, boy. And, and how are the contacts uploaded into the software program? Or do they pull from a database, or is that database included with that purpose?
Yeah, they would have to be, uh, yes, if you're, once you get the, we have to give them another.
So they start with a database of AEB, and then we build from there. Like mayor explained that we would have an option, once on our website, we would pull red, and they opt, how they want to get.
Okay, and, and so the, the end user of the software, so what is it, is it a remote button, or is it, uh, you have to hit the message in, a website, and then it gets, and then you send the way you want it sent?
So you have to work with the software, um, you have someone to, um, delegate in order to be in charge and have an admin, um, rights in order to set this code red alert.
And also, so I have, you know, they have a lot of, you know, they have a lot of, the, 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 the block.
And you can designate where you want that message to go?
Yes.
Okay. Now, so any trainings included with the price point, if you're a stand person?
So there's a number also, once we've enrolled, there's a number that you can follow to, uh, if you need to recheck, conserve information, uh, there's a number that we'll need to find.
And they can, you have, uh, code red, uh, if you like, uh, the, 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 the.
Okay, so I would like to. So I would like to make a motion to approve the whole system for the village of Burnham, for the unlimited emergency plus, for two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I have a motion of, uh, trustee greer to approve the project, uh, one thousand, uh.
Five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Can we have a second please? Second by trustee richardson, do I take the call?
Trustee cap?
Yes.
Trustee bonner?
Yes.
Trustee garcia? Trustee greer?
Yes.
Trustee richardson?
Yes.
Trustee paper?
Yes.
Motion cap, thank you for your.
And, um, just a reminder, as I do every week, I just wanna remind people of the Thornton Township Food Factory, that's open every Wednesday, it starts at nine-thirty to four o'clock. It's located in one fifty-three forty Page Street. It's a, a wonderful food pantry. If you don't need it, you know someone else that needs, that needs it, and they cannot get it over there, my suggestion is that you get it for them. You, uh, you don't have to get out of your car, you just at L S for your I D. And you just give them your I D, and that's it, they will load your car up. Wonderful, wonderful items.
Where is that?
It's at one fifty-three forty Page. In Harvey, it's right behind, uh, what's that, uh, uh, Popeye's Chicken.
And you said this is on Wednesdays?
Yes, on Wednesdays. And, and some people start lining up early, it's seven-thirty, eight o'clock, the line moves very fast, and, uh, this is just a blessing, they give you so much food. And senior, uh, carry out lunches are now at fifty-six at the Thornton Township Center, fourteen-twenty hunny-two drive, until you make city. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from November to twelve-thirty. And senior lunches are also served at the Riverdale Senior Center on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from ten A M to one P M. And you have our coronavirus expert tips, wash your hands frequently, seven-fourteen, if you feel sick, you carry hands, seven-seven tires, and use a mask. You have the most stories that you go in now, you have to use a mask. And I don't know if everyone knows, but there are two businesses that will be coming to the city of Maxon and Barca.
Amazon.
Amazon, Amazon will be, is being built in Barca, right up on, in Ninth Street, and in Maxon, Illinois. And they will be providing hundreds of jobs, uh, for, for people, so that's a blessing. And I do never know, wonderful, great. Wonderful. And also, if you're, if you, if you're getting a second stimulus, they're talking about getting a second stimulus check. If so, it will happen by August the eighth. I know that some people have not received their person yet, but they are talking about sending out a second stimulus check by August the eighth. That's it.
I thank trustee greer for giving a word of that information. That's my question, trustee cap. Good evening.
Good evening.
So always public works, you're generally a good, uh, because, great night. Also, we have a street sweeper out today, put upside, two hundred and forty-four, the pax, and, uh, forty-four, it's inside now. Those are very narrow streets, but just ask residents, vehicles, or street vehicles, we can get down, you know, street. Also, the air conditioner, the little saw, for service. Can replace the tires for the trailer, trailer that transports, uh, Bobcat, Rob, Bill, if they're worn out, and, and. Lights on this building, uh, Marquee, uh, has to be replaced. All, all the public, my, trustee cap, here.
Discussion of inspirational intervention to approve or not approve resolution number twenty-twenty R, zero-zero-eight, in the section forty-eight, code pass eight, classification four-one-four-five twelve, South Twenty-Seventeen, Burnham, Ohio. Text to number twenty-nine zero-one, four-one-seven, zero-one-five, twenty-nine, zero-one, four-one-seven, zero-one-six, uh, zero-one-seven, one-seven, two-one-eight, two-one-nine, and two-one-twenty.
That is, that I'm in front of, you just kinda give the board, uh, a bit of strength in that, because, put a detail in this class eight, you know, for the old furniture store.
There, I didn't hear, the fans are going right above me, and I can't, I can't.
I was saying that this is the resolution on the floor now for the class eight.
Right.
For the old furniture stores, so if you do that, give the board, uh, what you can ask to, uh, put a detail up.
The property over at one forty-two eleven Torrance was sold to the one Carlos Canola, the pull-up. And he's gonna be making improvements on the property, and turn it into a grocery store. And as such, he's requesting to have a class eight, uh, classification at the assessor's office, so there's a little bit of a tax break, and he makes his improvements. And it's, it's a fast plan, on the way here, he's been doing a lot of work over there already, so it's an improvement. Come back on our tax laws, and you'll be getting, uh, eventually, additional real estate property, tax, and, 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 so he's getting a little bit of a break, so that, uh, we can afford to make laws to improve. Building sat three or five years vacant, as I am aware of, and probably sat vacant for a long time before that too, so it's a moving right direction. That's I'm recommending that it be done. We had passed it, the class eight classification for the previous buyer, and that deal fell through, but this looks like it's a good one, so, he already, we already closed the deal, I think.
Good stuff. Hard project to get together.
Very.
It's been a very, very difficult project to get off the ground.
Oh yeah, totally.
I think the community probably would appreciate a grocery store more than another restaurant that we have a million of already.
Okay, right.
I think you're in a point from the board.
Uh, motion to approve the resolution number twenty-twenty R, zero-zero-eight, a resolution supporting a code pass eight classification, one-four-five twelve, South Twenty-Seventeen, Burnham, Ohio. Uh, for the following tax pin numbers, forty-nine, zero-one, four-one-seven, zero-one-five, zero-one-six, zero-one-seven, zero-one-eight, zero-one-nine, and zero-twenty.
I have a motion of, uh, trustee greer, second, uh, twenty-one, uh, zero-eight, zero-fifty-nine, second. I'll second it. Second by trustee, yeah, we're going to.
Trustee cap?
Yes.
Trustee bonner?
Yes.
Trustee garcia?
Yes.
Trustee greer?
Yes.
Trustee richardson?
Yes.
Trustee paper?
Yes.
Motion cap, thank you.
Discussion of inspirational intervention to approve or not approve resolution number twenty-twenty R, zero-zero-nine, universal motion for authorizing the execution of the county development program, CDP, twenty-nineteen program here, so this is an agreement, CDP Y, twenty-nineteen, project number one-five, two-seven, dash, two-by-nine, village of Burnham.
Okay, so about a year and a half ago, um, not that long, I was at a meeting in Cook County, and mayors do attend a lot of meetings here in South Texas, you know, so we can find what's going on, try to bring resources back out now, you know, to be of benefit, so. I'm just listening, and, uh, they were explaining some projects and some programs that would be available, you know, through the area. And I kept thinking, who can we have a project that I think would be similar to that? And I really, really didn't have any idea that it would prove, but it was a two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollar project for Burnham, so, we applied for it, so I instructed the engineers, no after, and, you know, made the contact with the people that were there, and they told me, said, yeah, we submitted. Yeah, they both said yes or no, in this case, they said yes, pray the law, I may, we just have, we just have to explain.
Okay, so this project, as mayor mentioned, actually goes back even further than that. I think it was around twenty-fifteen, uh, the village started receiving reports of low water pressure in the area of the village hall, where Burnham held carries, you know, the bad side of Torrance, that side of the railroad, uh, all the way to, you know, the other, uh, where the freeway comes through. So what we did is, we modeled that whole area based on the pressure provided by, uh, county by city at the corner of State and Torrance. And it turns out, that whole area is just served by a single six-inch water main that comes off of Torrance Avenue, twelve-inch on Torrance that takes it to the other side, to this side of the village, but only six inches go that way. So we determined a couple of different scenarios, uh, so this is actually a, a new eight-inch water main that will parallel the six-inch. So not only will that provide increased flow, it'll also provide redundancy. If there's a break on the six-inch, the valves can be shut, and that whole area can still have, uh, fresh water. With the valve shut, you avoid the, you know, oil order and all that stuff, so, um, all we really, we had that project ready to go, we just needed, uh, we need to fund it. And mayor found, uh, some CDP G funds, so what you're doing with this agreement is just, uh, agreeing to take, uh, to accept two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, uh, from Cook County to build this new water main, and it'll go, uh, in the parkway of one-hundred-and-forty-fifth. So, I mean, we'll have to cross the streets, but we're not gonna go right down the middle of the street. So we'll get this back to Cook County, and hopefully, um, if everything works out, we can get this constructed, uh, this year, and, uh, everybody can have, you know, flow, and, uh, fire flow and all that stuff.
Great job there.
How far maybe does it go, from, from where to where?
I think it just goes to the, to the village hall. It's, it's only a couple of blocks, I mean, we really, there's a grid of water main, you know, all we need to do is make that secondary connection, and then you're, you're doubling the, essentially, more than that, because we're going from the six-inch to an eight-inch and a six-inch.
And Dave, let me ask you this, so, what, uh, what addresses will this water main service? Will it service all of the buildings on Manistee, the condo buildings?
It will supply water to those blocks.
And it, and it service all the condos on Muskegon?
Yes. And anywhere, uh, east of Torrance and south of the railroad.
So that includes the apartments on State Street too?
Yes, yes, they, this main itself, it won't have any individual connection, no one will have a service line, you know, a small service line from this main, but it will supply, because the water system works like, just like electric grid. So you're just supplying another, uh, that amount of water to that grid, so, and, anywhere over there is gonna see an improvement.
Okay, so this is one-four-five, this is the, the eight-inch, so this is Manistee, this is Muskegon, so how are you, how, so are you gonna have a connection this way and a connection this way?
Correct, it'll, I think it connects on Muskegon, I should have brought the plans, I didn't think about it, but I could, uh, I could definitely drop off a set of plans.
That'd be almost.
Thought it was the North Parkway.
But I thought probably it would have to come to the top, right?
I think it's not short of there. Yeah, right, yeah, I'll drop off a set of plans.
And how long does the project gonna take?
It, it really shouldn't take that long. Um, the schedule is in the application, in the agreement. Uh, but I don't anticipate more than six weeks of construction time. Uh, mostly because we don't have to connect those services. So when you do water main replacement, you have to put the new main in while the old one is still there. Then you gotta test it, chlor- chlorinate it, test it, and then you have to go back, re-dig up everything and move those services over. Since we're not doing anything with services, it'll just be making those two connections and running it down the parkway. So I don't see much more than six weeks.
Would residents, what do you think about this project is going on?
Um, depending on how the valves work, if it is, it would only be for an hour or so while they, uh, you know, isolate the connection. But ideally, you'd make a hot tap, which is, you know, without turning off the line, you can hot tap and hold them. Ideally, no.
Great, awesome.
Last time we talked to the mayor, he was. Remember this is David, this is our engineer from Rocksteady, if you didn't know you, don't know.
Thank you.
Thank the mayor.
Uh, I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty R, zero zero nine, a resolution for authorizing the execution of the county development block grant program. Twenty nineteen program, year so recent, agreement, C D G P Y twenty nineteen, project number fifty zero seven, there are zero nine nine, Village of Burnham.
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Banner?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Clayber?
Discussion of consideration of intuption action to improve another proof resolution number twenty twenty R. Zero one zero, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement with Mr. Ballstake and Illinois Corporation to demolition and obtain ownership. Via judicial sale of one thirty nine twenty, South Second of Burnham, Illinois.
Okay, Mr. Rock is here, so before you concede, so I'm going to stand and introduce yourself and just explain to the board and to the public what this project is about.
Okay, uh, David Rock, uh, one of the employees at Mr. Bolts. There's currently a, a vacant lot that, uh, Mr. Bolts is going to build a gazebo on. Uh, just for a place for the residents, for the, for the employees to use during workdays. And that'll be available for the community to use, uh, otherwise. And next to the lot to the south has a building, a home that's probably been vacant for at least five years or more. Taxes, I think, have been unpaid for ten years. I know it's been on the, uh, at least, uh, once, uh, taxes were sold and then vacated, uh, that tax out. And uh, it's a, it's an eyesore right there and we'd like to see that, uh, building raised and cleaned up. And proposal is to, uh, to go through the judicial cell for abandonment of property using the village, uh, powers on that. Uh, the, Mr. Bolts would, uh, fund the legal costs for that and also the demolition costs. And in consideration of that, uh, idea of the property, uh, for, and immediate use is just going to be the part, make the part, uh, grass. There's no, no immediate plans for development there.
Mr. Rock?
Rock, or else it's a big mess.
Rock, rock. So right now, there's, there's no intention to prevent property right now, other than to just make it a free lane?
Correct.
Um, and so last year, we, we sold like eight pins. And those eight pins also had a class eight classification on there?
The, the class eight, uh, was, uh, specific to the property where, um, a sixty by, I think it's a hundred and, uh, hundred and seventy foot building. Which a forty foot, uh, extension was being, uh, built for it, it's actually on the road.
So what I would like to see is, this is a nice big piece of space that the company owns in that community. Has there been any community initiative in the past recently at all?
Community initiative as to.
Anything, anything that has anything to do with community other than being there.
Well, Mr. Bolts, uh, trust me, uh, Mr. Bolts, uh, contributes every year to our back to school. And also contributes, uh, just by, you know, various support, uh, we've got it when we ask, and it supports us. And it, it is supportive of our community.
Yeah, but I see that the activity is a little more.
Yes, so.
I'd like to see a little more, especially in that area, considering that that land is possibly a eighth of our total land space. So I would like to see a little more for the community in that area.
Let me say this, but also trust me, so here it is to speak about the class eight that they had last time. This area is completely different. This land here will not be the class eight, because this is, this is vacant land, is that right?
Correct, it's, it's going to be my heart and, and open space for the community to use.
So.
I have a question. So from my understanding, during the day or whenever the company is open, it's for the staff to use?
Yes, they're, they're going to build a gazebo and, and picnic tables and, and, uh, we'll be able to use it for going out for lunches and stuff. And then, uh, it'll be available for the community to use.
You don't have a fence around it?
No, it will not be fenced out.
I mean, that's wonderful, Mr. Rock, is, I'd just like to see more in that community.
So my question is, during the day, would that be a problem? Staff about having lunch and et cetera, if our residents will also come into the area at that time, would that be a problem?
No, I don't, I mean.
It's going to be all the money that we have to find.
I'm gonna share that one.
Mr. Rock, do you understand what I'm saying on Trusty Banner? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, I'm not for certain specifically what you're looking for, for, for residents, I mean, we're a business in the community with, uh, about, uh, at that location. I think we've got about seventy trucks that operate out of this facility. We've got, uh, the, um, the service shop, uh, trailer shop. Um, my guess, just rough numbers, probably a hundred and fifty employees operate out of that facility. And investing, uh, expanding a building, uh, to, to continue that, uh, growth and working. Uh, another item that's, uh, that's there for the residents to use and it's used where it regularly, uh, is there's a, a compressed air, uh, air hose comes out of the shop building.
Yeah, usually.
Yeah, I, and, uh, I mean, I don't know how everybody knows about it, but it's, it's very common, I'm going to say.
That's wonderful, compressed air to use and a few dollars here for the back to school, a few dollars here for the, for the Christmas, that's wonderful. I'd like to see more.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That area is very dilapidated, there, it's, 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 it hasn't, it's, it's, there's no attention to that area as far as, there's no businesses, you're the only business over there. And it's very dilapidated, anything, anything, anything.
Well, and we're, we've torn down several dilapidated homes that we're needing to, to get cleaned up. There was a, uh, the one house, uh, just, uh, across the street, uh, we acquired after it had the explosion. Uh, about, uh, I don't remember that, they, that was what, about three years ago, two years ago? That, uh, the home had explosion, it was boarded up and sat, uh, that was acquired and, uh, uh, praised. That's greened in now. Um, trying to remember there, they had one more. There was a, a vacant lot next to that that, uh, was acquired at the, uh, in, in the tax sale. And, uh, and the old foundation was still there. Um, that's been, uh, now, uh, grassed in and leveled off along with the, that home that was next to it.
Okay.
So. How soon will the project be started?
Um, the, the gazebo will probably be up before the judicial cell and that process is done. Uh, because the judicial cell, uh, we're looking at three months at the fastest. If there's, uh, any objection, uh, by the, uh, property owner, which I don't anticipate, they'll even be able to find who the quote current property owner is. Since the practice taxes haven't been paid in ten years. Um, I'm anticipating the current, uh, the tax buyer of the, uh, scavenger taxes in nine, in the twenty nineteen. Will probably be happy this is going on because it'll give them a reason to, to vacate and get their money back from, uh, what they paid. Probably just a five hundred dollar minimum opening, uh, on the property would be my guess. But they'll be happy to, to get their money back out of this because otherwise they're taking on a, an issue that, that may, that it's, uh, ripe for a, for a demolition, uh, order.
Okay. But you know, I, I'm sure that will be access to our, to our community. Uh, I'm very impressed by the company as well. I ride through the area often and the area is filled up very nice and it's, it's really flat, so I think they'll be access to our, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Same, just.
Uh, I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash R dash zero one zero. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement with Mr. Ballstake and Illinois Corporation to demolition and obtain ownership. Via judicial sale of one thirty nine twenty, South Second of Burnham, Illinois.
Trusty Garcia, I'm very interested in the resolution of the project. Uh, and you're from Monty, so it's up to you.
Okay.
Is that my trusty, uh?
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Banner?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Clayber?
Yes.
Good evening, and I have nothing to add tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just, uh, Nike, it's a guy, a liar saying we're a scam activity. If, if this will come to your home and, uh, get angry and tell the customer that they're behind in their deals. And demand that they make a wire statement. By weight of a jail, what, penny card, you'd be very. Um, and there's a number you can call, it's one eight eight eight, Nike four four U. That's one eight eight eight, six four two, six seven four eight. Nike, uh, service guys will always have, um, a uniform. They will always have a company I D badge with their photo. And they will be in a company truck. So do not get scammed. Also, you can still call in and apply for energy services to see them. That number is eleven oh eight, five six six, five one four three. That's all I have for now. Oh. We have one thousand and eighty two meters replaced as of now. One thousand eighty two meters replaced. Also, let me just mention that Burnham has gone green. We have, uh, a model house that we're gonna be using. And, um, we partnered with Urban Efficiency. Two of the representatives are here, they'll speak about the house and, and the new business. But we're starting a community garden right outside the community center. Matter of fact, tomorrow morning, we'll be out, uh, giving our garden credit. Anybody interested? Welcome to join us at six A M. And, uh, you know, it's a community garden, so anybody can join in.
Parks and Recreation, no report, we see.
Are there any, uh, presentation additions? Any communication, or, or responsibilities? I've been in business, I do business.
So I would like to do, Darrell and Jason, if you can come up and speak about the energy efficiency house that we have. Located on, um, one forty one oh eight, right that, that I mentioned. So if one of you will help you just stand up and speak to me about.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First and foremost, uh, my name is Darrell Johnson, I'm with Urban Efficiency. And we are a, a, a utility implementation contractor and a community sustainability design firm. Our goal is ultimately to connect communities to, um, energy efficiency and green solutions that make communities more, makes communities more sustainable end to end. And so first and foremost, I would like to, uh, congratulate Burnham on taking a tremendous step in becoming one of, uh, few communities within the south, south suburban corridor. That is actually, uh, looking to become more green and resilient, end to end. And that, uh, is, it is a process that requires a lot of planning, a lot of strategy, and it evolves over time. But the benefits to community residents and to the broader community as a whole are things that you guys can begin to see and to begin to, uh, reap the benefits from in the very short term. I wanted to just kind of give a little bit of context on, on what we're doing so that as I get to the part about the home, it makes a little bit more sense exactly what's going on. Our company works with, uh, Nike Gas to provide a lot of their energy efficiency solutions to residents within their, their service territory overall. One of the benefits that our company has by bringing forward this new element of sustainability is it allows us to, number one, not only focus on the energy efficiency aspect. But also focuses on other aspects of sustainability that are not covered under traditional energy efficiency programs. Such as community gardens, such as bike paths and walking paths, water conservation, healthy homes initiatives. And things that directly impact the health of individuals that live in these homes. One of the things that's very important for me to footnote tonight is when you live in an older home, you have a much higher risk of certain types of illnesses. That are either triggers of developmental causes because of poor indoor air quality. That's where sustainability becomes very important because we do focus on more than just making the home efficient, but we want that home to be healthy as well. So one of the things that we've been working very closely with, uh, Burnham's team and, and the mayor on is making sure that we're able to, not only to empower communities, but to educate the community. And being able to give real demonstrations so that community residents can actually go in and witness what it means to be in an efficient home. So the Village of Burnham has donated for this particular project, a home that we will then convert into a smart home end to end. It will be gutted, it will then, we will go in and we will put all of this, the, the latest and greatest technology in the home to make that home an energy efficient home as well as a smart home. The home will be used as a demonstration for community residents to be able to come in and to see exactly what goes into a smart home. You'll be able to see the types of energy savings that a smart home will generate. And there will be certain walls in the home that will actually be plexiglass, so you'll be able to see the different types of materials, such as the, there's different types of insulation that's in a wall. Uh, we will have all of the, uh, high efficiency furnace, high efficiency hot water tanks. All of those types of smart items will be put into this home. The beauty of it is we have been able to leverage relationships that we have with minority contractors that will actually donate the time and material to, to renovate this house. And to be able to get the house to a place of where it can be considered a smart home. One of the things that I think is tremendously important as we move forward with this is not only does it allow for community residents to be able to see what it means to be in a. a smart home, but this home will also be able to be leveraged once school does resume to some state of normalcy where teachers that are te, teachers that are educating their students on what it means to be energy efficient. We'll be able to schedule field trips for this home. Kids can come through, they can see all of the various aspects of a smart home. There will be monitors in the home to be able to give illustrations and narratives around what they're looking at and there will also be what we call an eco network access point, which means that residents can come in and get information on all things energy efficient, all things green. So, we have, we'll be rolling out opportunities for uh energy efficiency job training with, that leads to guaranteed job placement for successful candidates. Information about workforce development, small business development, and any other resources that are available uh for community residents, you'll be able to go to this location, one location, and gain access to all of that information. So, the overall focus of this home is to be a demonstration model to show and, to showcase what it means to be in an energy efficient home, but it's also about making sure that information is made available to residents about programs that are available throughout the, throughout the city and throughout the county um that they can take advantage of to be able to make their homes more energy efficient, warmer in the winter, cooler in the summer, and ultimately be able to conserve energy.
Also, to add on to what Darnell, I'm Jason Blackwell.
Thanks, Darnell.
To add on what Darnell just uh mentioned, you know, um, the healthy homes aspect to it. You know, so that's very, you know, as he mentioned, uh, the different aspects of what uh the indoor air quality, you know, that affects so many different um age groups in, in our demographics, you know, asthma, asthma related issues, you know, going trips back and forth to the hospital or, you know. So, this healthy home, this eco home is going to also show how we can reduce those, those things in your home. So, thank you, I appreciate you guys having.
You all have your own uh remodelers and, and contractors to, uh, as far as the uh home?
Yeah, so as far as the contractors are concerned, we have a, a network of, of contractors that we're already working with, uh HVAC contractors, electric, uh, electrical contractors and the like to be able to come in and, and to perform those jobs. If you have, uh, if there are individuals within the village that would like to recommend some, and I will use as a caveat that these contractors are donating time and material. So, everything that's going into this home is really about bringing about a collaborative, collective effort to show what, what it takes to be able to bring something like this about. And Burnham, I'm, I'm really excited because Burnham is the first community, the first demonstration community that's doing this. Uh, we are also working with uh villages in western suburbs, Bravee, Maywood, Westchester. So, we have this same type of concept going on throughout all of our underserved communities. It's really important that we understand, uh, and just to kinda touch on what Jason said a second ago, Cook County is the number one county in the country for reported asthma among youth and seniors. Number one, we have a, a severe asthma issue within our commu, within our county and it's largely because the homes that we're living in were built prior to nineteen seventy-eight. You have a lot of drafts in those homes, you're pulling, you know, air into those homes for crawl spaces and attics and so we, we're really trying to make sure that we're addressing that. Asthma is a, a five point nine billion dollar a year problem. Five point nine, I'm sorry, thirty point nine billion dollars a year problem. Five point nine billion dollars is because of indirect costs such as lost wages because mom has to take her, her son or daughter to the hospital, prescriptions that have to be purchased, you know, uh hospital visits if they are actually admitted into the hospital. It's a huge problem in our county and it is disproportionately affecting communities of color. So, it's really important that we focus in on not only the energy savings, yes, it's great to save money, but we need to look at what it takes to make our communities healthier, looking at the social determinants of health, the social contributors of health that are causing our communities to be sicker much more, more frequently.
Yeah, the reason I was asking, because I wanted to offer my, uh, best control service and I don't cost family or, uh, in, in my.
We definitely, that, that's, I think we talked before and um at the, at the school and that's a very, and you bring up a very valid point, not to, to belabor the tide, but one of the things that we may not be aware of is when we start talking about healthy homes and indoor air quality, one of the key things that creates um triggers for asthma and even could be a developmental cause of asthma is things such as roach fries, which are roach droppings, mice droppings, those types of things. And when we go into some of these homes and some of these communities, there are infestations of, of, of pests. And so, one of the things that we're looking at under the healthy homes model is integrated pest management, where we can go in and identify those issues, I, uh, and be able to bring in a solution for those homes so that those kids and those occupants can be relieved of some of that, of some of that health burden. And so, we're, we're really looking at some innovative ways. Burnham, you guys are leading the way in, in a, in a huge way. Um, there's gonna be a lot of excitement around this in the coming weeks and months and so we're just excited to be partnering with Burnham and, and with the entire team, it's Richardson and the mayor and everybody's been working alongside of us.
Okay, thank you, Burnham, thank you.
I have a question. So, what is Burnham's part in this? What's our agreement with this? What do we have to do? What's our part? We donate to them?
The house has been, um, because we mentioned saying the house, we don't need to do that and uh, so, like I said, it's gonna be a lot of house for people to go and look at and go to review and make your comparison and you'll be able to see, like you say, what a smart home is, uh, getting a picture of. I couldn't hear, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you there. I'll ask the most opposed, read to the book.
I think the most opposed would be.
Can we have a second? We're quite.
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bonner? Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Clayber?
Yes.
Most prepared, thank you for coming. Read to the jury.